All right, first over business, the budget of the weekends. The United States of America, many super popular for which stands one nation under God, invisible with liberty and justice for all. All right, first over business, the budget of the weekends. The United States of America, many super popular for which stands one nation under God, invisible with liberty and justice for all. Jackie, ready for overall?
Oh, yeah. Councilor Hooker.
Please excuse.
Councilor Bjornson.
Here.
Councilor Charman.
Here.
Councilor Hooker.
Here.
Mayor Kutchin.
Here.
Councilor Kenyon.
Here.
Okay, I'll hear the one. Councilor Hooker, excuse. Uh, number four is additions, corrections, adjustments to the agenda. I have a couple. Nine point seven is the CA evaluation summary, which is going to be given by Councilor Hooker. So try to push that to the next meeting. Seven point three, Public Safety Committee also be briefed by Councilor Hooker, and I don't think they met last month.
I thought that committee had one.
They didn't, oh, maybe they did, but.
They haven't met. There's a planning meeting, uh, next week.
Eleven point one three, the WAC funding committee, uh, the committee meets, is going to meet before, uh, soon after this, and Sarah Hook wanted to move it to the next meeting so she could have that information to present it on with the rest of her update. Uh, James, do you have anything more than that?
Were we moving nine point six, the operating guidelines for the Oak Ridge?
Uh, yeah, what was the purpose of the reason?
Uh, I think I misunderstood council's direction. Um, I reviewed the operating guidelines, but, uh,
Oh, admin committee? Okay, so let's defer to the admin committees. Perhaps to the next session or in the session after.
Um, we weren't able to review that yet, so we have to meet again.
Anything else, James? Anything from the council as far as additions, corrections, adjustments?
Uh, the only thing I had was, um, the, oh, parts of these, maybe if it's, like, giving the format or am I supposed to?
Um, if you're ready to do it, you can, otherwise, I don't work with that.
I have one prepared.
There it is, right there. Okay. Really dialed it.
Well, I didn't know because we, uh, like, yeah.
If you're ready to do it five, otherwise, we're teaming.
I did prepare one if you'd rather just, okay.
Anything else from the council for adjustments? Okay. Public comment, so first I'd like to just for our own benefit to refresh the, uh, council rules, procedures, comments, or guidance on public comment. So it's, council will not engage in any discussion or make any decisions during public comment. The council may take comments under advisement or council comments for discussion and action at a future council meeting. And the mayor may direct the city administrator to follow, but any comments received. And that is kind of paraphrased, look at the agenda under item five, so I just want to refresh. With that said, uh, is there anyone in the room that has a public comment? We actually have a podium down, hopefully organized comments, anyone from over speaking, but, anyone have a comment in the room? Okay, and assume, uh, anyone have a comment? Speak up or raise the hand. Nothing heard, we'll move on. Six is mayor comments, announcements, and proclamations. Uh, I got a couple. Um, first, like to recognize, uh, the city's longest-serving employee, staff employee, Floyd Stalka, who retired, uh, thirty first of January, with thirty-three years, four months, and twenty days of service. Definitely, uh, corporate knowledge was in him, so he's gonna be someone irreplaceable. Um, and I, what I do is ask you, if he's not moving, he can still be in town, so if you see him, please shake his hand and tell him thank you for dedicated service to the city. Uh, if you don't know, he was in Public Works, uh, worked, uh, number one under Robert, and did a fantastic job, and Robert often turned to him for advice because he had all the knowledge from years, years past, so. Uh, thanks to you, Floyd, for your service. Um, next, uh, there is, uh, if you notice on the agenda bills, uh, James has been starting to put the strategic themes that match up and the, and the goals. And it's, it's, to me, it's a, it's a plus because you can start tracking those with regards, their accomplishment towards those goals on the scorecard when we have our quarterly briefing of strategic plan. So, um, you'll, you'll notice at the bottom of every agenda bill, there's goals tied and themes tied to the agenda bills.
Um, thanks for pointing that out because I have noticed that, but I wondered, with the scorecard part of it, how does that equate over into like a percentage of accomplishment?
That's gonna be a task for James to figure out as he goes through the agenda bills and figure out what the impact was of each of those agenda items on the, on the goal itself, worth of goal itself. That's it for mayor comments, announcements, proclamations. Number seven, council comments and announcements. Councilor Johnson, anything?
Nothing from me.
On the table, Councilor Kenyon.
Thank you. I just had one thing. I see that we did receive the new flags that were ordered for the, um, the United States and the state of Oregon. They are gorgeous, and I wanted to thank the, um, committee that organized the redecoration of this room. We made sure that we got new flags because the old ones were in terrible condition.
Hooker, anything? Right, um, consent agenda, one note before we get a motion, uh, to make everyone aware, if you didn't get them today, there was an update to the minutes of one, one nineteen twenty-three. Uh, minor changes to the voting on a couple of the agenda. With that, uh, we have, there are depicted, so, uh, can I hear a motion?
I'll move to approve the consent agenda. I'll second that.
So Kenyon moved to approve the consent agenda, and, uh, Councilor Hooker seconded. Uh, Jackie, would you call for a vote?
Mayor Kutchin.
Yes.
Councilor Bjornson.
Aye.
Councilor Charman.
Aye.
Councilor Kenyon.
Aye.
Councilor Hooker.
Aye.
Okay, uh, consent agenda is approved. Next up is number nine, uh, point one, business from the city council last week, April, street closures. James, do you or Rick or somebody want to brief, introduce this, please?
I'm gonna hand this on to Rick, uh, to discuss. Yes, so, um, the agenda before you is requesting street closures so that we could perform the artwork painting on the crosswalks and storm drains we've been working on. Um, one thing that I must mention is, um, this is two for tree planting festival, so this is weather and if raining, we won't be able to do it. That's why I'm asking for two Saturdays instead of just one. If we miss the first Saturday, we have a second Saturday. If we miss both Saturdays, we will postpone until after the, um, the weather turns. But I thought taking the risk to have the paintings done by Tree Planting Festival was worth the ask. So that's why you have the dates in front of you. Um, and that's basically two Saturdays right before tree planting. Um, and, uh, tomorrow night I will be at the, um, next door at the Art Walk, and then again at the high school, making calls to artists to try to, uh, it's volunteer artists to help us out. Um, and then after that, we're gonna be doing a Zoom meeting on Friday, the second, I'm sorry, Friday, uh, February seventeenth, at six P M for follow-up for any artists that want more information or if we find any, any stragglers that we didn't catch in those first meetings. Uh, regardless, um, again, I'll ask them for the street closure for those two days so we could perform the, so we actually get out some paint.
Yeah, one pause for an admin. Um, I got a note that I couldn't hear on Zoom. Councilor Johnson, are you hearing okay?
Yeah, I'm hearing fine.
Okay. Passing thing. Um, given that, uh, I have a motion for nine point one.
I'll make a motion. I move, I move that we approve the street closures on April twenty-second and twenty-ninth for the Upper Willamette Storm Drain and Creative Crosswalks project to paint art in the crosswalks and around the storm drains in the adjacent, adjacent to Cedar and Ash Streets at East First Street.
One second.
Okay, the motions made by Councilor Kenyon and seconded by Councilor Johnson, um, discussion on this item. Questions of staff or discussion on the agenda?
Uh, I actually have something. I was waiting to see if someone else. So, um, it sounds like from the way this is laid out that, um, some people are gonna create ideas of what they want painted, and then that will come to council?
That's correct.
Is that right? Okay.
We originally pitched it, we pitched it as the council would be approving the designs.
Cool. And did we have a theme that we're going for or just anything?
Um, for the crosswalks, not so much, but for the storm drains, it's all, um, river-related themes.
River, right. Just that from the, so then, um, are, is the intention on this project to do the crosswalks and the storm drains or just the storm drains?
Both.
Okay.
Yeah, and then hopefully there's a pilot, which we could, if it's successful, we'll continue to do more.
Yeah.
Hooker, anything?
No, I think it's a great idea.
Councilor Johnson, anything?
Nope.
Great. Okay, the motion was to, uh, approve the street closures on April twenty-second, twenty-ninth, the Upper Willamette Storm Drain and Creative Crosswalks Project to paint art in the crosswalks and around the storm drains and adjacent to Cedar and Ash Streets at East First. Jackie, could you call for a vote, please?
Councilor Charman.
Aye.
Mayor Kutchin.
Aye.
Councilor Bjornson.
Aye.
Councilor Hooker.
Aye.
Councilor Kenyon.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Get on to nine point two, that's, uh, City Hall window bids. Again, over you, James or Rick, correct?
Uh, this one may be calling, uh, to discuss.
All right. So, um, issue, the City Hall building has had very little to no upkeep since, on it since it was built in the early nineteen sixties. With the recent help of ARPA funds, they've been able to start replacing the twenty-two-year-old carpet, installed ductless heating and A C units in the main rooms and replace the original fluorescent lighting fixtures along with some paint and much other needed updates. City Hall's heart of the city has been severely neglected, leaving it not far behind the fate of the WAC building. A building that is currently condemned due to lack of upkeep and lack of funds to keep it updated and to be used and occupied. We have louver windows, which are very insecure, and we have drafts from just about every window taken away from the positive impacts of the new ductless systems. We have over seventy windows in the building, which are all single-pane and original to the building. We have makeshift windows made of plywood put in surround the old window A C units, they do not fit securely, and every spring and summer, we have birds that nest in them and leave nesting and feces matter that actually fall into the inside of the building. Our servers that back up and hold all the information to run the City Hall sit right below one of these windows. This is just a few of the negative impacts of these current windows in the City Hall building. This is a substantial cost, but have done will prolong the life of this wonderful mid-century modern building that is the heart of Oak Ridge. It should be saved from the fate that it is facing if we don't start taking care of it. Any business is, that is to be conducted in the city is then at this building. Should it not be something that we take care of? I am asking for approval to use ARPA funds to do this much-needed update to maintain and approve the City Hall building. So, I got four, ended up with four window bids, which was more than I was, um, expecting to get. I was pretty happy with that. And you can see the, the bids here. Uh, the one that I'm recommending, if approved, would be to go with Mark and Company because they spent a substantial amount of time out here with us, me and Rick, going over, um, the,
Design standards.
The design standards to make sure that they match, um, the, the, the zoning ordinance. And, um, you know, making sure that everything's gonna come together really well, so.
Okay. Do I have a motion for anyone?
I move to allow the finance director to accept the proposed bid for, I cannot have that number. It's right on the bottom. Oh, I'm sorry. Fifty-nine thousand eight hundred ninety-four dollars from Mark and Company because they demonstrated, oh, sorry, I'm gonna back up, to purchase and install new windows at City Hall using ARPA funds. I'll second that.
Okay, the motion was made by Councilor Kenyon and seconded by Councilor Hooker. Any discussion on this? Uh, Councilor Johnson?
No discussion at this point.
Thank you.
Um, I didn't share, but, uh, how much are the plans?
I had that in my office, and I walked in here about it after, um, I think it was two hundred and thirty-seven thousand, the three seventy-four. I had it on a sticky, I printed it out and walked in here about it.
Councilor Kenyon?
So to clarify that, two thirty-seven, is that from this year's pool of ARPA funds? Because I don't think we've finished spending last.
Correct, that's from this year's three seventy-four.
Okay. Um, and do I go on with my own questions now? Or, that was just a follow-up on his, okay. Um, I did notice on the, um, bid from a B, is that how you say it?
I think so.
That they don't do the final paint or staining, but they do replace the wood and with pre-primed wood for the stay-stops, they called it. Um, but the Mark and Company did not have any details in their bid as to what all it includes, like if the stays and stops are included?
Everything, all of that's included. The only thing that's not is the finished paint.
Okay, and so, um, another thing that I noticed between the two was that one suggested that they would haul away all of the old windows and all of the debris that they're gonna create in the project. Is that also included in?
Oh, yes.
Okay. Well, I wanted to be sure because it's, it's not listed in their quote. Um, so do you have anything in writing that, that confirms that they'll, what all they're covering?
Their, their, just their bid.
Just their bid and a verbal?
Yeah, I mean, that's what they do is windows, so they're not gonna leave stuff behind and stuff like that, so.
Well, I just want to make sure because the other companies were very thorough about mentioning what they do and do not do, so.
Yeah. Um, I spent a lot of time with Kelly at Mark and Company. Like I said, he was, he was willing to come up a few times to kind of go over the design standards and stuff with us to make sure that they actually have to, you know, replace some framing to make a bit, stuff like that, so.
Good, I think that is all I had. Thank you.
Okay, I had just a couple, um, reading through the U S Treasury final rule, it appeared to me that it was unauthorized to transfer ARPA funds. You prefer that, obviously, you must.
What's that?
Reading through the U S Treasury final rule, I think it sounded like this fit into public building, uh, pre-
Correct.
caveat for the proper use of ARPA funds.
Okay.
Uh, so, um, that one's James, just as you first got it before I was seated, that, uh, this came to council at a council request as far as the bids. Uh, and I consider that, uh, that choice to be in the C A scope, not the city council. He's, he's entitled to get three informal bids by the process by our public contracting manual. He makes a selection, and he brings it to the city council for funding approval. So having us choose to me is a bit of an overstep, since it happened before I got here. I think I'm okay with that. I'll, I'll go by with that, but, uh, just for next time, I believe this, this informal bid process truly is a C, and split them to C A scope to make that choice.
Not sure I'm following on that, well.
The choice of the actual contractor, so that C A has responsibility by the public contracting manual to,
Oh.
three informal bids. He's supposed to either through a, one of his own committees that he stands up to review them, or by himself, make a choice as to what's the right bidder is.
Okay.
And the council really is only there to approve the funding for it, so that, unless it's already within budget, so, next time I think we should probably adhere to the contract manual. Um, second is, and I don't, and I don't know if you're playing on this, James, but reading through that manual, it sounds like, given the, the amount of the bid, there will be a public notice required before you actually give the contract, so if you could. And, and that's as far as it is, you just, you have to post on state website for example. And that's all I have. Any other questions? Okay, uh, the motion was to allow the finance director to accept the proposed bid, uh, for fifty-nine thousand eight hundred ninety-four dollars from Mark and Company to purchase and install new windows at City Hall using ARPA funds. Jackie, would you call for a vote, please?
Councilor Charman.
Aye.
Mayor Kutchin.
Aye.
Councilor Hooker.
Aye.
Councilor Kenyon.
Aye.
Councilor Bjornson.
Aye.
You? Should pass again. All right, now we're moving on to nine point three, which is gravel grinder alcohol permit. James, do you want to kick this off?
Uh, so, uh, council must approve any alcohol permits come in, uh, this is the gravel grinder, uh, bike race, place, uh, second, fourth. Uh, they would like to serve alcohol from five to eight P M on June twenty-second and June twenty-third. Um, they've done this every year they've been here, and they use, well, it's these servers to do so, haven't had any problems in the past, uh, the application is complete.
Okay, now do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion. I move to approve the gravel grinder, gravel grinders alcohol permit. I'll second that.
Right, motion made by Councilor Hooker, seconded by Councilor Kenyon. Any discussion? Councilor Johnson?
Nope.
Councilor Kenyon? Councilor Hooker?
No.
Uh, James, do you know how the, I know there's another, the following agenda bill is about bus fares, same general dates. I think, I think, I think integrated all with these alcohol serving, or is it just two parts, two ends of the park, or do you know?
Uh, I don't know the exact integration, if they are sharing a lot of facilities, um, I, I don't know.
Okay, that's all. Excellent, all right, thank you. There's no further, um, the recommended motion was to approve the gravel grinders alcohol permit. Jackie, could you call for a vote, please?
Councilor Kenyon.
Aye.
Mayor Kutchin.
Aye.
Councilor Bjornson.
Aye.
Councilor Hooker.
Aye.
Councilor Charman.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next up is nine point four, which is the bus fare alcohol permit. James?
All right, uh, basically the same deal, uh, although they're serving alcohol a little bit longer from eleven A M to nine P M on June twenty-third, twenty-fourth, and twenty-fifth during the bus fare. Uh, they also completed their application. Properly, they have security, et cetera. Yeah.
I have a motion.
I move to approve the bus fares alcohol permit.
I'll second.
Yeah, I hope you got there first, but, uh, motion made by Councilor Kenyon, seconded by Councilor Charman. Any discussion? Bus fare alcohol permit. Nothing heard. Uh, Jackie, can you call for a vote, please?
Yeah.
Councilor Charman.
Aye.
Mayor Kutchin.
Aye.
Councilor Kenyon.
Aye.
Councilor Bjornson.
Aye.
Councilor Hooker.
Aye.
All right, motion passes. Get on to nine point five, which is the Dogs of Valor Fee waiver request. James?
Right, um, so Randy, uh, Volkerston, uh, owns a five oh one C three charity called Dogs of Valor, provides, uh, service dog training and obedience classes. Is requesting to be able to use the Green Waters Park Community Building, uh, for just one hour every Thursday from ten to eleven A M. Uh, possibly through the month of April, basically just until the weather gets warm. As he was finding, it normally wouldn't park there, finding it was too cold. And the last week I let him try it out, uh, Brittany Brennan was there, the caretaker. Word back, everything was fine, no issues. Cleaned the room. There were no issues on, on that. So technically, the fiscal impact, if he were to use it all thirteen days at the full price, eighty dollars a day, even though it's just one hour, fiscal impact would be one thousand forty dollars. Again, it's one hour, other than the full day. Uh, so options for council are to grant that, uh, deny it, or modify it, to give him some kind of discount or an offer of a discount. So I include some information, um, on the program. Bye. Randy here.
I'm saying he was gonna come back, but.
Yeah, I think he's gonna be there for that. See him online, but, um, yeah, there were any questions, he's supposed to be there, but. You're late here.
Okay, uh, do I hear a motion?
I move to approve the fee waiver request to allow the Dogs of Valor program to use Green Waters Park Community Building every Thursday from eleven, ten to eleven A M through the end of April twenty twenty-three.
I'll second.
Right, the motion was made by Councilor Kenyon, seconded by Councilor Johnson. Is there discussion? Uh, Councilor Johnson?
No.
Uh, so, he's only using it for one hour. If somebody else wanted to use it that day, then they'd be paying a full, full day fee or, of that work, I guess. So we're, we're around it, we'd stay. Stay a little up until ten or.
Yeah, well, we've, well, we've done in the past, for instance, when we had the A A, not the A meetings, but N A meetings, is we told them, uh, if somebody wants to rent the building and it conflicts, then you can't use it. Because the city would like to make money from rentals, so that would be same deal, yeah. So if somebody wanted to rent it, yeah, you'd have to remove the time or cancel for that week. But again, yeah, that's, that's if you, if council- But again, that's that's if you, if council were to give them the full fee waivers. If if council were to choose some kind of discount. I would consider that a rental and nobody could swoop in and take it.
That's all right. That's Kenyon.
My question would be, since we don't actually have a rate set for an hourly rate. Could we. You know, I guess, consider setting one and then. Giving him a fee waiver for that amount. So that the building's available for the rest of the day and he has.
Oh, yeah, the building would definitely be available. I see where you're saying. Could.
I've always wondered why we went to the full day thing because most often it gets rented by the hour for. Little family parties or picnics in the afternoon or something with the museum.
I believe that was due to the COVID and having to go in and clean up after. That's what I was told.
Oh.
So it kind of got switched up because of that.
We might just reconsider looking at that at some point.
Under the schedule of fee review during the budget process.
Great idea.
That's counsel. Only comments here, and if it's like the other waiver requests that council has approved, I do believe, while I admire. And respect the mission of the Dogs of Valor. I believe they should have some skin in the game and perhaps either get a prorated rate. By the amount of time they use it. Or a discounted rate of fifty percent or whatever the number is, but. I just don't believe. We could be carte blanche giving every nonprofit that comes to us a drive. So that's my comment. Any other comments? Right, Jackie, go for a vote, please.
Counselor Charman.
Aye.
Counselor Beyoncine.
Aye.
Mayor Kutchin.
No.
Counselor Hooker.
Aye.
Counselor Kenyon.
Aye.
Any motion vests? Next up is ten point one. That's the R F P results for the Realtor of Record. And you want to kick this one off?
Sure. So as council will remember. We put out an R F P for Realtor of Record. That was posted on December fifth. Last year. It was open for twenty seven days, closed five P M. On New Year's Eve. We received one application from Joey Kingsbury Real Estate. It's here in the room today. It's, it was reviewed by myself. Rick and Council Charman. Just determined to be viable, build all the requirements of the R F P. Obviously, the R F P and the. Applications, sorry, the application is not included because of this issue that has sprung up. And that is about a week ago. Oak Ridge Real Estate expressed interest. City council has meant to me and submitting a late application. So they were unaware of the R F P till after it closed. So they are interested in submitting an application. So. First decision council must make is whether or not. To reopen the R F P in order to allow. The application from Oak Ridge and potentially there's. And if that's the case, to pick a deadline, a new deadline to close. The reopen R F P. Depending on what council decides. There and. Then we would move on to whether or not to accept. Proposed, we do have. I can't predict it.
So. When we go for a motion, I would think that you could make either one, assuming that if you make option two, it means that. Going direct to the warnings. Do I hear a motion?
I move. To approve Oak Ridge Real Estate's request to reopen the R F P in order to allow them and potentially others to submit an application. By February twenty eighth. If that's the last day this year. Is this a leap year?
I'll second that.
Okay, motion was made by Council Kenyon, seconded by Council Reser. Is there discussion? Council Kenyon, go ahead.
Yeah, the first thing that popped into my mind was if we had gone for the other. Motion. We would be voting on something we haven't even seen.
And it could be tabled as well, but the the main issue was whether or not to.
Okay. So. So I actually. I'm still okay that I made the motion the way that I did. I. I do feel strongly, normally, that. Late applications. Wouldn't be accepted. However, in the, in the case of this particular issue. After learning at our last council meeting, or I believe it was then. That that we didn't reach out to any of our local. Realtors to let them know that this was an option and knowing. It's very likely that our Realtors in Oak Ridge, Oregon don't have software. That searches for R F Ps for them. I think that it's reasonable to to. To read open and and even go to the extent of, and I'll do it myself, contacting. Local Realtors. Let them know it's here.
Counsel Hooker.
Whereall are we advertising when we put something out like this?
Simply on the city website unless council wants to authorize. Newspaper. Quite expensive. Want to say it's like twelve hundred dollars for. Add in the register guard.
For an R F P. Yeah, the registered guards for sure. Okay, so basically it's just our website. Okay.
That's fair. I'm. I like sticking with, personally with, you know, deadlines following through. So I mean. My convenience R F P now, get a deadline, deadline passed.
Council Reser.
I agree with reopening and allowing more, this one to apply.
Thank you. I have a few. Well, I really truly respect the Realtors here in town. They do a fantastic job. Right now, this, this, the town financial situation, I think we could, as we have done in the past. Over the deals ourselves, saving a commission of thousands of dollars. We have the formatted formatted sales contract that we did with. Lot up in O I P and it's easy enough to do that and just have a lawyer take one. We'll get it for much less money. So I disagree with the whole idea of the Realtor of Record. However, that council decided that for my time, some of them were. It's like I'm at, but I disagree with the reopening a couple of reasons. First. I think you're opening the city up to an appeal of this decision. There's no reason, real reason, that we're opening this other than to give advantage to another person that wasn't as. A adept at looking for the R F P. So I think your could cause some. Perhaps finance, you know, lawyer fees and working with the appeal and figuring out whether to be violating the statute. So I oppose to that. And the fact that we didn't reach out to the local Realtors, well, if you reach out to the local Realtors, then. A Realtor in Eugene is probably going to be certain him at a disadvantage. So I think you advertise on a platform. And you don't specifically go out and target the Realtor that you want to apply. So I don't believe in that. So those are the concerns I have about reopening. There is a chance you could close it down altogether and re and re submit, but even that. To be up for appeal because you have to have a reason for why you did not select the applicant. So. Council Kenyon.
I would have assumed that. Reopen, I mean, yeah, I guess the motion was to reopen. Would include closing or whatever it is you just described, you know, like. Basically.
Withdrawing the R F P and resubmitting.
Exactly.
But again, without a legitimate reason as to why you closed it down without turning down the applicant. I think it opens you up to. You read the R F P language, you read the contracting manuals. Any case.
So you're saying the R F P language is in our contract manual?
There was some language in there and there's some actual language in the, there's some language in the actual R F P. What about how's how's the process is to select?
So then I would like to move to withdraw my motion. And I would also like to move to table this for some research.
Table.
Table, table this topic to the next meeting.
What kind of research are we doing?
I'll second that motion.
I am going to research the R F P language that you mentioned and understand the process. Before I make any new motions.
Okay, the motion was first, the original motion was withdrawn. Second, the the next motion was made by Council Kenyon. To table the agenda item to do more research. Is that what you want to do?
Yes.
Okay. And that motion was seconded by Council Reser.
No, yeah, we don't, we don't need it. We don't have to second a withdrawal.
The one time. Any discussion on the new motion? Council Reser.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify something you said just a minute ago, and by what you just said, am I to understand that. We're required to accept the one bid that a R F P brings in if there's only one bid brought in?
No, you're required to either accept it or turn it down and tell the tell the bidder why you didn't choose them.
All right.
Anything else?
Nope.
Thank you. That's a term. That's a hooker. That's a Kenyon.
No.
Okay. I disagree with this. I think we should have come knowing what we were going to do to this agenda bill. Done the research, but that's. So Jackie, you call for a vote, please. Oh wait, let me repeat the motion. So the motion was to table this agenda bill. Until you can conduct research. Is that accurate? Okay. That was the motion.
Well, I'm sorry. The motion was to table this agenda item to the next meeting.
To the next meeting, okay, table this agenda item to the next meeting, so you can do research. Jackie, would you call for a vote, please?
Counselor Beyoncine.
Aye.
Mayor Kutchin. Counselor Kenyon.
Aye.
Counselor Charman.
Aye.
Counselor Hooker.
Aye.
Good, motion passes. Right, now we're on to ten point two. This is the R F P results for a new auditor. James?
Okay, also in December, council authorized putting out an R F P for a new auditing firm. We received one application from Hanford and Associates. Based out of West Richland, Washington, however, they're specialized in doing audits for small city governments. And they do quite a few in Oregon, including Yahas, Steen, Enterprise, Toledo. Joseph and Matolius. Their bid came in at seventeen thousand nine hundred dollars a year. Very exact to what we paid Paulie Rogers, our former auditors, twenty five thousand is what we paid them. So we're actually saving seven thousand one hundred dollars a year. And there's a potential that that seventeen thousand nine hundred might actually be lowered. If we can switch to a modified cash basis. Statement form, which we're in the discussion, but I'm, let's assume it's the higher number, seventy thousand. Still saving over seven thousand dollars a year. Since this agenda bill was written, actually received. Well, let me step back. This went to the audit committee. They reviewed Hanford's applications. Determined that all the requirements of the R F P. Hanford seemed well qualified. And then checked their references. All responses were very positive. Included some of the responses on the reference checks for. Council's perusal. Now, what I was going to say is that since I wrote this agenda bill, Paulie Rogers actually contacted me because they are still under contract to do our. Audit that was supposed to already start, but they told us recently they couldn't start it. At all until the end of February. Again. Being late, which is the reason we put out this R F P. In the first place, so they said, even though we were under contract, they would let us go early. And so I approached Hanford and said, by the way, could you do this yours too? And they said, yes, and they already, they're willing to start now. On that, so you could save even more money. I fell in with them immediately to start. This audit, so. Good news all around, saving. Twenty five thousand dollars over the four year period. And everything is checked out, our research into the company. They're they're a smaller firm than Paulie Rogers. But everybody we talked to sent their very hints on. They actually basically come out, spend a few days. We, I was very impressed. But the councils were involved in the process on audit committee, they may have comments as well, but. I'm recommending that we. Accept their bid and. Make them our new auditors.
Great, your motion.
I'll make a motion. I may move to allow the city administrator to negotiate the contract with Hanford and Associates LLC for auditing services.
I'll second.
Okay, a motion made by Council Hooker, seconded by Council Reser, a discussion. That's Kenyon.
Yes, I was part of the. I'm on the audit committee and reviewed the contract in full and. The R F P and made sure that they had met all of the. I shouldn't say I, I did do that, but our whole committee did that together. And I felt very comfortable, especially after reading all the reviews. That each one of us had made reference checks. Were all very positive. I will note, though, that. We're all very positive. Uh, I will note, though, that there was um, there was a small city, one that I contacted that only has two hundred people who said that this auditor did not get their audit done on time. And uh, that it was solely because they had told them, don't worry about us, you have much bigger clients, take care of them first. We're not gonna get dinged by the audit or by the state anyways. So uh, they, they actually encouraged this auditor to put them last and. So, just to divulge that.
Um, yeah. Is the, sorry, I'm sorry, modifying cash basis.
You know, I, I don't know all the details that I think there. I know that Pauline, did you have that discussion?
No, I haven't thought for yet exactly what she's um thinking that we're gonna do different, but I guess we'll find out. Yeah.
But from my understanding, it's 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 an option. If you're a smaller city, there's a different way to to do your finances and budgeting. Um, and some of these other small cities in Oregon are doing that. Uh, so we're gonna have that discussion with the auditor. And if we are able to do that, that's gonna depend a lot on our software and our ability. Um. Apparently that makes it easier to audit. So if we're able to do that, we would save an additional uh three thousand nine hundred per year, maybe only charge fourteen thousand.
So that's something on our end, um, that we change how we do our budgets.
Yeah.
The rest, okay. So by ability, that's unknown, but.
I thought we do it. Uh, what are the implications of being late for your audit in the city?
Well, we found out um, it's a past year, uh, the state withholds the funding that the cities receive until the audit is in, uh, and that happens in July. So our current audit is uh already late. So, but we won't get deemed, we won't get withholding until July. Um, Hanford is confident that they can complete it by by July, so. Yeah, so basically the state withholds money until it's in, then they.
Counsel Bjornson, any questions or discussion?
No.
Thank you. Um, just a couple, when you said, they'll take the current of your, that means that they'll take the, take a couple of the audit that's gonna be done in December?
Correct, yes, we're trying to.
That's all I had. Um, any other questions? I can call for a vote, please. No, let me, let me restate my question, I'm sorry. Uh, it was to move to allow the city administrator to negotiate the contract with Hanford and Associates LLC for auditing services. Jackie?
Counselor Tomins?
Aye.
Mayor Ketchum?
Aye.
Counselor Hooker?
Aye.
Counselor Kenyon?
Aye.
Counselor Bjornson?
Aye.
Motion passes. Now, we're going to 10.3, which is Police and EMS Dispatch Services IGA contract bid.
Mayor, if we may, I actually got a message from Chief Bob Morris, he's running a little bit late. Assistant Chief Eric Markell is here. Uh, but it might be uh more appropriate to lay this if we can, uh, just.
To later in the meeting?
Yeah, just later in the meeting, he's in.
We can do that, yeah. Counsel, okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay. Next is thirteen point, I'm sorry, eleven point one. Uh, that is, this is staff board committee, commission verbal reports, or written if you have it, but uh, eleven point one is the admin committee. Counselor Kenyon?
Yeah, sorry, I was missing a little note. Okay, so on our admin committee, um. We actually completed the guidelines for the charter review committee that we've uh were asked to do by the charter review committee. But um. They have not met again yet to review those. We also elected a chair, a vice chair, and a secretary. And that pretty much took up the whole meeting with that process.
Okay. Uh, eleven point two is Parks and Community Services Committee.
All right, so in uh, the month of January, we met twice and some of the things that we accomplished and and items we discussed is we did elect a new chair. Um, we had a visitor from Lake County Forest Tourism. We discussed possible upgrades to park committees for us, with us. Um. We discussed ideas of asking the library for space for city documents, much like what is already on our website, but just in hard copies, uh, such as our park plans, zoning ordinance, stormwater plans, and other related documents. Um, we also discussed creating a subcommittee uh for the purpose of uh Horton Park and the possibility of bringing improvement to the park to complement the work being done at the uh Land Accuse Center. Um, and we'll be having a listening session and a formal gathering at the Oak Ridge Fire Department Meeting Room on Sunday the 12th, and I must thank Linda for the work that she's put into that. We have brainstorm ideas regarding corporate sponsorship to help in refurbishing the amphitheater of Green Waters Park. And we discussed options for a Hill Street turnaround.
As always.
It's fun.
Oh, um, Mayor, um, you mentioned electing a chair. Did you also do vice and a secretary?
No. I guess we need to do that on the next one. Sorry, good chair again. Chair's, Counsel Charman.
Okay, any other questions for Rick? Uh, next is eleven point four, that's audit committee. Counsel Kenyon?
So the audit committee met and elected a chair, a vice chair, and a secretary. And we reviewed the RFP. That's uh, that pretty much took up the whole meeting other than the elections.
Any other questions for audit?
Um, I was there, but I can't remember who we elected chair. You, I thought so, okay. Take a notes with it.
Yeah, I think it's uh in our minutes already.
Oh, you're.
I wrote on that, but I just couldn't remember if it was your or I elected.
Yeah.
Uh, next is eleven point five, and that's the Charter Review Subcommittee. Counsel Kenyon again.
Yes, we also met, and uh, that's where we elected a chair, a vice chair, and a secretary. And then we um had a discussion about the need for some guidelines to be established for that committee. The concern of a committee member was that we could go through a couple of years' worth of work towards uh revising um, a recommendation to go on the ballot for revising the charter. And then that it could end up coming to council and council could say, oh, we don't like that and and toss it. So they wanted uh some guidelines, and that is what we moved into the admin committee and reviewed in that committee. Um, so those are gonna go back to the Charter Review Committee for their acceptance and approval. And we also had a very thorough um, just ongoing uh, review of the charter.
Mr. McNatt stays the chair?
Yes, yep. That committee actually decided uh that they, because there's no um, there's no resolution established for subcommittees, that they would prefer just to stay with who they elected on their very first meeting throughout the uh term of the entire subcommittee.
I know when we first stood up the committee, we talked about target dates for uh to go on the ballot.
Yeah.
I'm saying, I think the original one's not gonna be too long, but it's, is there a new date, or are they to go on the ballot?
No, we had a little discussion about it, but um, there was never a, like a consensus on a date. The thing that we all uh realize is that something like our national forest burning down can really put a damper on uh media, you know, having meetings and making progress. When we do meet, we do make a lot of progress. We don't know what next item is gonna come up and jam that up, so we didn't put a date.
Any questions for Counsel Kenyon on this? Six is Budget Committee, which is not, sorry, well, it's not on the line. There's a discussion on that. Eleven point seven, uh, Library Board, can anyone speak to that? I don't think so.
I actually attended. But I didn't write anything else.
All right, um.
We appointed uh counsel.
No.
Well, we were waiting until this right now.
Next to eleven point eight, uh, once again, Counsel Kenyon with RT, NP, and TRT.
And that committee actually hasn't met because we only have one um approved member in addition to myself. I did see uh on an upcoming uh council meeting, we're gonna be able to look at a couple of new applicants, and at that point, we will have a forum February sixteenth, I think it is. No, they're not on tonight's agenda.
Couple are, but there's a couple for both, next week's two.
Right, after our next meeting, if all the applicants are selected, we will have a forum. So.
Any questions? Eleven point nine is the Planning Commission. Rick again.
Uh, yes, in January, the planning commission, we had no action items, but we didn't have a work session scheduled for the seventeenth. But due to outside reasons of the effective availability of our commissioners, we had postponed that meeting to January thirtieth. Uh, during that uh, January thirtieth work session, it consisted of an update from the consultants performing the TGM updates for evaluations. And the consultants updated this on the stakeholder interviews that were held in late November. The community meeting held on December seventh and their current progress regarding the code review of the uptown district.
Any questions on planning? Looking for Rick. Uh, eleven point one zero is ODEC, and uh, to report that uh, while we have an applicant, we don't have a forum yet, so we haven't been, but we will as soon as we get some. Uh, eleven point one one, Special Fire District Subcommittee, Counsel Hooker.
We met on January twenty sixth at six thirty, we uh, at the fire department. Uh, Steve Abel was the one that came in and did a kind of brush this up on what all he's doing. He is starting feasibility study. He is gathering all the information, which he said will take some time. Uh, he has come up, several people have asked the same exact questions, so we just kind of reiterated. Um, our next meeting will be February twenty third at six thirty at the fire department.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Counsel Hooker? Okay, uh, eleven point one two is the WAC Subcommittee also.
The WAC Subcommittee, there was no meeting in January. The next meeting will be Monday, well, it's coming Monday, February sixth at five thirty in conference room at City Hall, if anybody would like to. What time? Five thirty?
Right, um, we're on to uh thirteen, thirteen point one, which is the CA Evaluation Process Resolution zero one, twenty twenty three, second reading. James, you wanna kick us off here?
Sure, so uh, this is the second reading of this resolution, which I'm happy to do. We want to do that verbally. Uh, it make one small edit on the last attachment. That was uh, to note that the process for the evaluation scheduled to start as early as possible in September to be completed by December seventh.
By when?
December seventh, uh, to allow for the reinvestment salary increases to be submitted on budget process.
All right. Go ahead, you have a motion?
Improve the second reading of the resolution for one dash one twenty three. Reading exhibits A, B, and C.
Second?
A second.
Any discussion on the resolution, anything about it?
I actually um remembered at the last meeting that we had a discussion about updating that section of the you know, what what he just mentioned, but uh, that we didn't actually like get council consensus or a uh you know, change of motion to to direct to have that changed. So I wondered if we could just get a poll from the council now if that is something that they wanted to do.
Uh, so I guess the question would be, uh, just a verbal, you uh, agree with changing the dates to start the evaluation as early as possible in September and having it done by the seventh of December uh, to inform the budget process if there are any salary adjustments. Counsel Turner, you okay with that?
Yeah.
Counsel Bjornson?
Yeah.
Counsel Kenyon?
Yeah.
I'm okay with that, so, right?
Okay.
Any other discussion? Okay, so uh, Jake will call for a vote, and then we'll read the resolution.
Counselor Hooker?
Aye.
Counselor Charman?
Aye.
Counselor Bjornson?
Aye.
Mayor Ketchum?
Aye.
Counselor Kenyon?
Aye.
Right, motion passes. Under the RCA?
Sure. All right, I'm reading Resolution number zero one dash two zero two three. A resolution repealing and replacing Resolution eleven dash two zero two zero. City Administrator Performance Review Criteria. Whereas the city of Oak Ridge Council desires to repeal and replace the previous CA Performance Review Criteria Resolution. And whereas pursuant to section twenty one of the city charter, the city administrator is the administrative head of the city, which reports directly to the city council, supervised by the governing body. And whereas pursuant to the city administrator's employment agreement, the city council shall evaluate the city administrator's performance at least once a year and establish criteria for evaluation in accordance with open meeting laws. And whereas the city council reviewed the criteria for evaluation in accordance with public meeting law on January nineteenth, two thousand twenty-two, that was during the first reading. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the city of Oak Ridge as follows. Section one, the city council hereby adopts the city administrator performance review attached as exhibits A, B, and C.
I don't think we need to read the attachment.
I hope not.
Never have.
Uh, all right, we've got to vote, we've read the resolutions, and so I think we're gonna go on uh thirteen point one. On to thirteen point two. On to thirteen point two, the involvement waiting for, supplemental budget resolution two dash twenty twenty-three. James, you are calling, wanna introduce this?
Uh, I will pass this off to Colleen.
Hold on a second.
That's paper copy.
Yes. Want me to start reading this and then go over everything, or let me go over stuff first?
Um, why don't you introduce it, just read the agenda bill and then, um, we'll go in and get a motion and then we'll go to discussion.
Resolution number oh two dash two zero two three.
Colleen?
Yep.
Sorry, the, the.
Agenda bill is the page that you just wrote down.
Of that? Right there, all you, all you have to do is introduce the issue.
Alright. Agenda item number thirteen point two, supplemental budget number one for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. Uh, issue is Oak Ridge Finance Director Colin Shirley has a drafted supplemental budget number one for the fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three for consideration for passage by the council through Resolution zero two dash two zero two three, the attached resolution for details.
I don't hear a motion.
I move to approve the supplemental budget for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, as outlined in Resolution zero two dash twenty-three.
Second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion was made by Council Kenyon and seconded by Council Hooker. Uh, discussion, Council Resorson?
No.
Council Charman? Yeah, um, I, I have some, uh, questions, so, um, I mean, when I look at it, the budget change, it's just a number, um, so I don't know what previous number, what it's worth changing out. I assume this is the new number, but also where the line item comes from, so. I've seen most of these, well, some of them are going to be tied to the line item on budgets, or have, I think, a fire. I think it'd be nice to have a focus, easier to cross check everything. I did pull up the budget that's online, but unfortunately it's a scanned, yeah, so that we can't searches. I did get, uh, this evening, an Excel spreadsheet. To me, I just, I, I don't know enough about this. Based on this here.
Any, uh, what's happening to this? Why? Council Hooker? Council Kenyon?
Um, well, I, I wanted to address what you just mentioned. I know that's really valid and supplemental sand budgets themselves are sometimes hard to understand, especially as a new counselor. Um, but just so that you know, historically, I don't think that supplementals have ever referenced the line numbers, although typically the descriptions match up. And so, once you're able to search, I think you'll be able to find, um, to match these up. So you know.
Yeah. But you know, I see this as more, you know, sort of oversizes, we should be given enough info in, in the packet to be searched. Okay, I think, at least they're able to, this was just, there's some numbers.
Any else, Council?
Um, well, I wanted to point out that I think that a few things that we have talked about being in the supplemental didn't get captured here. And so I wondered if we might be able to look at another one, or, um, Colleen, did you see? I know it was late, but I sent kind of a.
I just saw just the human.
Okay, so you.
Is there a problem going, uh, getting everyone together?
Yeah, that's what I figured is, so whatever didn't get captured here, if it needs to be, that we could, uh, just do another one. And I sent her a list of what I was concerned about, so.
I agree with Council Terman about the readability of it. Uh, our past supplementals have, have given you the original number, it's given you the change, it's given you the new number, and it tells you where it was, like, by description. Uh, so I think it'd be valuable to have that information. Current format, it is a format that stays provided for, because notice, we're gonna have a meeting, we have to have a public meeting. Uh, nothing is prescribed about how the resolution has to read, so I think we can make the resolution a lot more reader-friendly, friendly, uh, by providing additional information that we've asked for. Um, with regard to the things that I didn't see in here, like you, Council Kenyon, they probably match up, but I, I just wondered, Colleen, do you have any idea of, I know that a lot of these errors happened last fiscal year, and a supplemental cannot fix last fiscal year. However, it rolls over into this year by inaccurate opening balances, or, uh, primarily inaccurate opening balances. So, have you figured out, are we able to correct those types of things?
The only one that I can look at, you're speaking of the open balances, O Y P, right, this one?
There are two others that I bring to mind. There were two transfers, I think there were a hundred thousand dollars each. One was from the general fund to the emergency services fund. And reflects in your financial report, but it was never authored, not authorized by the council last year. It was supposedly done within the budget cycle, which I don't know that, because you can't correct, you can't move money. Budget committee can't move anything around in the current year. So I don't know how that happened, but that would mean that the general fund is actually has a hundred thousand dollars less than they think they did. Transfer a hundred K over there. There was another hundred K that got transferred to.
Waste water.
Water funds, same story, if that wasn't recorded last year, that means the opening balance of the general fund is another hundred thousand dollars.
But they were recorded last year.
There was nothing in the budget that indicated they were recorded. They were, they were not.
Last year's budget?
There was no something on the budget, there was a budget to do that.
Right, that doesn't, that doesn't mean that it wasn't recorded in the finances.
Well, it was recorded in your system.
Yeah.
But in the budgeting system, it wasn't recorded, it means.
So, when, when Kena from Alcoa came and helped us with all of that, she was aware of those transfers. And so, those transfers to wastewater, to E M S, and the, the only one I still have a question on is the O Y P, all the I'm looking into. So those, those other two transfers are in the opening balance.
Didn't they happen until last November? I know, but what did you, was Kena here at that time? What?
Yes.
So, what you're saying is the transfers are made without council approval last year?
That's right.
Is that a correct statement?
We were told that, um, by Kena that we were just going to have to take the hit because the supplemental didn't get done.
Yeah, did the public ever know that?
It was discussed in every single budget meeting that I can think of, as far as voting went. Yep. So the public could have been aware at the public hearing.
Uh, so one other thing, um, the resolution, I believe, states it's effective immediately, and I would ask that we make the amendment that it's thirty days from now, because only in emergency can you have a ordinance for a resolution effective immediately. Concerns about making that change? Or do I need to amend the? Any other discussion? Alright, Jackie, can you call for a vote, uh, we've restated the motion, sorry. Uh, the motion was to approve the supplemental budget for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, as outlined in Resolution zero two, Act twenty-three.
Mayor, I, I would like to make a suggestion, a friendly amendment to that motion would be, um, with the changes that you mentioned.
Well, go ahead, it's not a friendly motion, it's just an amendment, so you can go ahead, make the amendment verbally, if you can get a second, hold the other, and we'll go back to yours.
Okay, could you refresh my memory from what it was you were asking us to amend it to?
Uh, the, the effective date of the resolution.
Effective date of the resolution.
Thirty days after.
Thank you.
Or thirty days after today.
So I would like to amend the motion to say that it would be effective thirty days after today.
But your second?
Okay.
Any discussion on the amendment? Alright, hearing none, uh, Jackie, can you call for a vote on the amendments to extend or to make the effective date of the resolution thirty days, uh, after passage?
Council Hooker?
Aye.
Council Charman?
No.
Council Beyoncine?
Aye.
Mayor Ketchum?
Aye.
Council Kenyon?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes, and now we'll move to the next motion, which was the original motion, which was to approve the supplemental budget for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, as outlined in Resolution zero two, tech, twenty-three. Any discussion before we close? Jackie, can you call for a vote on the original motion?
Mayor Ketchum?
Aye.
Council Beyoncine?
Aye.
Council Charman?
No.
Council Kenyon?
Aye.
Council Hooker?
Aye.
Alright, motion passes. So what we'll do now, I think, if we can, is move to, uh, back to ten point three, which is the new police EMS dispatch services I G A. Junction City? James, you wanna open up and maybe kick it over to the seat?
Thank you, Mayor. So back in July, uh, about a week after I took over as C A, uh, we were formed at L C S O, uh, no longer be dispatching for us. The, uh, initial date they gave us was end of September, they would be ceasing the contract, that was later extended to the end of June of this year. Since then, uh, myself, uh, our chief, Pollitt, his chief, Martin, started the process of finding another dispatch service. Checked all around, uh, local area, Central Lane, Lawrence Cottage Row, Junction City, et cetera. Got a few bites, but nothing quite came through until, uh, last week, uh, we received a written bid offer letter, which the council has a copy of, from Junction City Police Chief Bob Morris, who is here, as well as Assistant Chief Eric Markell. Uh, they are offering to take over dispatch services for a hundred thousand dollars a year. That will be for the first year after that, is three percent increase, which is exactly the same percent increase that we've seen with L C S O, um, in their new contract, but also in July, increased their contract to a hundred twenty-six thousand, fifty-six ninety-eight. Uh, so, in other words, do, do a math, we're saving twenty-six thousand dollars, uh, by switching to Junction City. I've met extensively, uh, with Chief Morris. Uh, he's shown me some of the additional features that we will receive that we don't currently have. The one that I found most remarkable is he has a, there's an app that allows you to turn any cell phone into a radio. So you could be vacationing in Paris and listen to dispatch and talk, um, as if you were on the radio. Which I think is quite helpful, as a police officer myself, sometimes your battery runs out, and it always happens when you don't want it to run out. Um, and it's not good to be without communication, so having that backup is amazing, and we tested it out in a restaurant, it sounded just like anyone from a radio. Um, also be given, uh, full-time access to CAD, which is computer aided dispatch system, so you can see the calls, information, suspects, we were dealing with locations, et cetera. That's also something that we, we don't have right now, that officers have been wanting for a long time. Um, there are some additional apps, fallout apps that the fire department currently uses. Um, we believe those can still be used. Uh, basically, our firefighters get a text and stuff, there's a call, um, looking for more people, so we can still use those as well. Uh, Junction City, they, they've had their own dispatch center for many years, uh, I used to work there, as a reserve police officer for three years, two thousand and ten, two thousand and thirteen, I believe. Um, also of note, uh, Junction City's dispatch is one of only eight, uh, loan departments in the state that's credited by the Oregon Creditation Alliance, uh, for the highest standards of service and industry. Um, to also note that, uh, Junction City has been quite gracious with us in the past. As you may recall, they provided us with extra officers with charge during the aftermath of the Cedar Creek fire, which we very much appreciate. Help with that. Um, because this is an I G A, no governmental agreement, not listed in the contract, uh, an R F P does not have to be issued, I was asked that a couple of times. So just wanna make that clear. Uh, it's also our, my opinion that even if we did an R F P, it's unlikely to result in any bids. Technically, we could be dispatched from anywhere in the United States. Some federal services, like Forest Service, I think they would dispatch out of Seattle. Personally, I don't like that, because you wanna call customer service or your dispatch center. It may be East Coast, they don't know you, they don't know the area, these guys know us, um, so I'm more comfortable with that. Uh, obviously, anytime you have change, things can be a little scary. Um, so, you know, we're putting in a contract, that, you know, there's a, there's an escape clause, ninety days, and that goes both ways. If, if, if the contract is not being upheld, uh, I can't imagine what would happen, but I don't know. If you guys stop dispatching for us, we say, hey, that's, you're breaking contract, we're out, so. Um, so I think that alleviates some fears that some people might have about going to a new dispatch system. Uh, myself, I, you know, I, I'm very comfortable with this, again, because I've been involved in the negotiations and seeing the technology that we're talking about. Uh, right now, the transfer will be relatively, hopefully, quick and easy, uh, I'd like to get it done as soon as possible so that we stop paying the higher rate, with currently dependent L C S O. Yeah, in, in the future, uh, technology's changing. Everybody's going to fiber. Right now, we have the old copper wires, that's a transition that we were gonna have to make anyway, eventually, so that's, you know, I don't know, year down the line, something like that. Um, that's a cost we're gonna have to incur anyway. Um, but right now, the, the startup costs seem pretty minimal, it's doing, loan companies get their lines transferred over Junction City. Obviously, we will be responsible for, for those fees, but they're considered to be probably in the thousands of dollars, single figures, so like under ten. Um, so, yeah, still saving money. Um, yeah, so I'm, I'm recommending that, uh, Council, uh, allow me to negotiate, uh, the new contract. Give them the bid letter, adds all the meat and potatoes that, that will be in the contract, contract will be longer, all the legalese, et cetera, that us lawyers get paid to do. But, uh, I don't, I don't, I don't see any pickups in any way, so. Again, Chief Morris, uh, and Assistant Chief Markell are here, um, our chiefs are online as well. Again, Chief Morris and Assistant Chief Markell are here, our chiefs are online as well. Our police chief, Kevin Martin, is doing a medical training with the fire department tonight. He's been gracious enough, I think, to come back on online, in case anybody has some questions for him, Chief Hollitt, fire department is also here. Yeah, so if anyone has any questions for Junction City or our chiefs?
Let's get a motion, and then we'll go and let the chief speak, if you have anything, then ask questions as well. I'll say. Can I hear a motion, please? Allow the CA to negotiate IGA contract with Junction City. But your second? I'll second it. Chief, do you have any opening remarks, or you want to just stand by your question?
I, we were here to stand by your questions.
Very good, very good. All right, discussion, Councilor Bjornson?
I was just curious, why wasn't an RFP put out a while back for this?
That's, it's an option. We, we haven't done that in the past, because it's an IGA. We felt that, that one on one asks would be more trifle.
Can, do you know who all was asked?
Yes, we approached Cottage Bro, Florence, Central Lane, probably forgetting some, I don't know, Chief Hollitt or Chief Martin could remind me. Basically, everyone we could think of, we looked into the services openly. Toledo on.
Anything else, Councilor Bjornson?
Not at this moment.
Thank you, Councilor Charman? That's Hooker?
Yeah, I know I used to work in the eighties, I forget. That's why I went to dispatch, so I know this, the area, and back then, things have changed a lot since then. I know you dispatched for, right now, you dispatch for Nuvo as well?
Correct.
Okay, and is that the only one you're doing?
We're doing it in Civic Row, Florence as well.
Oh, you are?
Yeah.
Okay. And then, you used to do, we used to, when I was there, we always did the fire department as well, and they have since?
They, they moved, when I took over six and a half years ago, we're moving to become a primary P S A. There's two different types of nine-one-one centers in the state, primary and secondary. Primary actually takes the nine-one-one calls, and secondary is do not. Junction City is a secondary P S A, Lake County Sheriff's Office is a secondary P S A. And when the nine-one-one calls come in, we were experiencing some significant delays between transfers, between Central Lane and Junction City. And some of those delays still continue to exist today, we were moving to do it. I unfortunately had to direct my attention at some personnel issues and stuff, this is current what I picked over. So we discontinued for the moment the move to actually become a primary P S A. The fire department did not want to have those same delays. They wanted to be dispatched by the agency that's actually answering those nine-one-one calls. So because of that, they opted to go to Central Lane, because Central Lane is the agency that answers those calls, as well as dispatch the annual services for Junction City. So they wanted to have everything basically in one place, which makes logical sense. And so that was the reason that the, that the fire department went back over to, or went over to Central Lane.
Okay, and then co-brig at one time, you dispatched, do you still dispatch them?
No, we do not, they, they worked out some kind of deal, I think they had made a more cost effective deal with Lane County, I'm not sure what that was.
Okay.
And again, we, there are forty-nine P S A's in the state, and we are one of only eight that is, attain O A A Oregon Accreditation Alliance accreditation certifying, which certifies that our standards, our best practices, and that we have met all of the benchmarks required of their accreditation process.
One more thing. One more, you mentioned dispatching people. So from the time you get a call, how soon do you dispatch?
Immediately.
The police or?
Instantly.
Okay, I was gonna say, you just?
And the minute we get the call.
Okay.
We, the minute we get the call.
Right.
As an example, we had, right shortly after I got there, had somebody from one of the banks come into our lobby, holding her cell phone, talking to a dispatcher madder than anything, because she'd been put on hold and was trying to report what she thought to be a tiger robbery. She came into our dispatch center, just madder than anything, because we put her on hold. Our dispatch center was looking at her like, I don't know what you're talking about, we're not talking to you. She'd been put on hold by Central Lane, and there was a significant delay in the, in the transfer.
Okay.
And again, e- every center is going to have problems, I'm not in any way trying to diss Central Lane, I'm just trying to explain the mechanism of, the mechanics that you're just going to have. By nature of the call being transferred, there's going to be some delay there.
Right.
Just, there's no way to avoid it. Which is effectively anything, any nine-one-one call comes in, anywhere in Lake County, they get called and then traced without the sheriff's office. So it's the same, it's the same.
Counselor Kenyon?
Yeah, excuse me, I was just thinking that that's exactly what we're currently doing, is our calls go to Central Lane first, and then they go to Lake County Sheriff. So if you're a secondary, is, is like Central Lane the only primary in the, in the Lake County or something?
Right.
Oh, okay. So, what kind of delay? I mean, I guess there's probably no way to accurately know what kind of, like, percentage of delays are happening.
Correct, I mean, we're relying to bug whatever Central Lane does. And if, if there was a delay, oftentimes, the caller will tell us, or, you know, they'll, they'll be very upset, or it will come out later in the call, you know, we call in at this kind of time. A lot of the issues that we were having at the time that I took over, seem to have remedied themselves, and the delays are less frequent. Again, there's nothing that I, it's, I'm, those aren't, I, I don't have access to their minute-by-minute access to their call logs, to their code logs, I totally don't, I can't tell you what's in the landers, but I can tell you the issues that we have seen have never.
So in your department, does, do you guys have EMD dispatchers?
Yes.
You do?
Yes. All of our people have always maintained EMD.
And that's like a certification or something?
One second, for the, what's your, the emergency medical dispatch?
Okay, so if somebody calls in and says I have chest pain, and they look for a certain, either a car or this program on the computer, and it says you, you can tell the caller this, 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 like CPR instructions, right?
Try and help them walk through it while they're waiting for an ambulance. So I wanted to find out from James, I have notes scribbled everywhere. Did you obtain any other, you said you contacted these other agencies, did you obtain other quotes?
We got a
Or bids, or whatever they're called?
We got a, sort of a verbal figure, going directly to Central Lane, and that was roughly, and again, this was not an official bid, seventy-seven dollars a call, so that would be over a quarter million dollars a year.
I call?
Correct. And then, I think more recently, they said they couldn't even do that at this time, and don't have enough staff, unless we hired staff for them, so hired three staff members. That's such a, again, you're up to a quarter million dollars. That's just, yeah, not, not possible. Cottage Bro was initially interested in putting in a bid, but then they had some personnel issues, and they said they, they had, that they were no longer interested in bidding, because they had to deal with their own personnel issues. Probably read about in the paper.
I don't need the paper, but okay, I'll Google it.
So no, no other bids, otherwise they fight absolutely with the project.
That's what I was thinking, or wondering, okay.
Anything else?
You can move along, and I'll read through my notes and see which ones of these apply.
All right, I have a couple of questions, Chief. You mentioned, we talked about the interoperability between Lake County Sheriff's Office and Central Lane. In the past, a lot of the information would, would get parsed incorrectly, so it wouldn't get full report from Central Lane. I think it had, and they said it had to do with the software issue between two systems, I do experience that, and I heard that.
We, we, Lake County Sheriff's Office, Central Lane, nine-one-one, and us are on different software systems, we're all on three different software.
So is there a reason that Central Lane is, is changing, are they, you know, anything about that?
Not, you know, the cost, the cost for them, they are saying with the same thing, that their system actually is at end of life, and the company that is, that provides the software is no longer providing updates or anything else, they're going to do, we're not to try to keep something alive, but they're into it in the millions of dollars, yeah, so to change any kind of a system, especially for a network and a system that is that large, is insanely cost-rearing.
Second question would be for the, for the radios, is it, do you see any, I'm not a tech guy, but are there any technical compatibility issues of radio systems?
Because all of your communications up here exist by a phone line.
Yeah.
Because the repeaters can't reach down either to Lake County, or to us, or to Cottage Bro, or to anybody else. So if the communication goes from phone line to your office here, which then hits your repeater, and then goes out, and so I've already done contact with women, who is the telephone provider. They are, they currently have copper lines in place, and they are looking at switching those to like James, et cetera, switching those to fiber in the, somehow in the future.
Lastly, our current contract expires at the end of June, do you see that transition being able to happen timeframe?
Yes.
Were you?
Yes, yes, absolutely.
Now, Chief Hollitt and Chief Martin, do you have any concerns or comments? You're on. Let's see, Chief Hollitt.
Chief Hollitt, you know, my only concerns are, I do have the question, do you have priority dispatching, or just EMD?
I'm not sure what you're asking.
Priority dispatching would be Alpha, Bravo, Charlie, David level calls.
We can accommodate whatever you are wanting us to accommodate, if you're wanting the, if you're wanting it by, by the priority, that's something absolutely that we can do, and our, our system will accommodate that. Right now, obviously, right now, police, police aren't dispatched by that, so that's not something we're presently using. And at the time, we were not using that with Junction City, but that is something that we get it on.
And then, you know, we've had the same issue with Lane County, but there's just can be a large delay between the primary P S A, getting the nine-one-one call, and it being transferred. We've had several instances in the past where valley departments have been dispatched before we have, so that's just an ongoing concern that I have.
And that, and that's something I can talk to, nor can I address.
Okay, Chief Martin, anything from you?
Oh, was there any specific questions?
Right. Uh, no, I just wanted to know if you had anything, any general comments or questions? Chief Morris?
Uh, no, just maybe some info for the council in this, this process. When we looked at it, technically speaking, there's only eight dispatch centers we could have chose, because we eventually went to go on what's called L rig. And I've talked to that with the city administrator, and I believe when you were city administrator, Mr. Mayor, we spoke about that as well. And Junction City PD is one of the, one of the dispatch centers that can do L rig, so we were kind of wanting to do it, they can see more our size, that understands us more, and the only two choices really were Junction City and Cottage Bro. And Cottage Bro doesn't have the staffing to accept anybody dispatch, so.
Hey.
The only other choices were Lane County, Central Lane, Springfield PD, Lynn County Sheriff's Department, Albany nine-one-one.
Thanks, Chief.
And we're on, right now.
All right, any other comments?
Yes, I did find I have a couple of questions. Well, other than what's written in the letter, will this add any additional cost to our system? In, or to our? You know, like, would we have to buy any equipment, or arrange for any certain kind of cell phone contracts that we don't currently have, that would add additional expenses?
Short answer is no.
Okay.
Basically, the, the additional backup phone, uh, radio system works on any cell phone, well, I guess, I'm not sure, like a flip phone from ten years ago.
Nobody does.
No, well, there you go. So, yeah, the phones stay the same, the, like I said, there'll be some changeover costs for changing the phone lines, but that'll be minimal. You know, anytime you want to change phone services, some fees to, that's minimal. And the additional services they're providing us are included in the contract, so the
Right.
Backup, that's additional, the can, accessibility, and that's all included in the price.
So when you mentioned earlier that, that about the fiber that we have to switch to, is that going to be an added cost, and it would happen no matter who we use?
Exactly, yeah, that's, the copper lines are going away eventually. They're already moving to that in the valley, because we're going to be, you know, delayed in the interlands.
Tiny little.
Yeah, so, yeah, we were going to have to change over that eventually, it could be a year, it could be two years. But that's, that's a cost we're going to have to face no matter what.
Okay, and then my last one was whether or not you had done any reference checks already?
Uh, yeah, I, I called around, kind of informally.
And you were satisfied with what you?
I was. What, what I particularly like about going to the smaller agencies is that you can actually talk to folks. He answers my calls. If I have a complaint with LCSO, you gotta talk to somebody, you gotta talk to their supervisor, then talk to their supervisor, and then they'll get back to you, maybe.
Nate, that's, yes.
Anything else, Councilor?
No, not, yes.
All right, Jackie, can you call for a vote, please?
Excuse me, I have a question, hold on.
Okay, Councilor Bjornson, go ahead.
Yeah, after Chief Martin spoke, I just had a question for him. Can you say again what you said you hoped the agency had, that you said L rig? And you said there's only eight capable dispatch centers?
Yes, L rig is a, a system we eventually want to move to, and it will be a better radio system, and we can still use our older system for a backup at that point, but currently speaking, even if we go with this contract or agreement, when we go down to the valley, we still have to use the legacy sheriff department system. And eventually when we ship, switch to L rig, we will have our own, own channels up pretty much anywhere in Lane County. Uh, Lane County or Benton County, that's what L rig is, it's in Lane and Benton County. And it's a consortium, it's not controlled by one, anyone that's being for instance, I believe P web is actually the, the largest provider or the largest subscriber to it. Then one other thing mentioned on the reference checks, I think the best reference is that Junction City is one of the few accredited dispatch centers in the state. So I don't think you can get much better reference than that. I'm sure Chief Morris can speak to that.
Thanks, Chief Martin. And you said that there's only eight that we could go with that have the L rig capabilities?
Yes.
And which ones were those?
Uh, there are Lane County Sheriff Department, Central Lane, which is Eugene BD, Springfield PD, Junction City PD, Cogge Grove Police Department, Lynn County Sheriff Department, Albany 911 and Corales Police Department.
Thank you.
Thanks, okay, uh, the motion recommended is to move to allow the city administrator to negotiate a new IGA contract with the city, Junction City for dispatch services. Jackie, can you call for a vote please?
Counselor Bjarnson?
No.
Mayor Ketchum?
Yes.
Counselor Hooker?
Aye.
Counselor Kenyon?
Aye.
Counselor Tomlin?
Aye.
All right, motion passes. Chief, thanks very much for coming.
You're welcome.
Looking forward to it.
Did you vote on the one?
I did.
Yes, okay. Sorry.
Did say yes, though, yeah.
Oh, okay.
So.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
You're very welcome.
All right, we've got a few minutes left and I'm intent to get through these appointments because they've been waiting a long time, so. Start with in the bill fifteen point one through fifteen point five. James, you want to briefly introduce it? I think we all kind of know over here.
Sure, so we have some appointments. First one is John McWelland. He's applying for seat five of the planning commission. That term pending, uh, December twenty six. Let me go through all of it just one at a time.
Yes, all right, do I hear a motion on John McWelland?
I move we reappoint John McWelland to seat five of the Oak Ridge Planning Commission, expiring December of twenty twenty six.
Second. Sorry. Right, motion was made by Counselor Tomlin, seconded by Counselor Hooker. Any discussion or questions of John? That's it, we'll go for a vote, Jackie, can you call for a vote?
Mayor Ketchum?
Aye.
Counselor Bjarnson?
Aye.
Counselor Tomlin?
Aye.
Counselor Kenyon?
Aye.
Counselor Hooker?
Aye.
All right, welcome aboard, John, back aboard. All right, we'll move on to fifteen point two, which is an appointment for Heather Beulie to seat four Parks and Community Services Committee. Is Heather in the room? She is. All right, do I hear a motion?
Oh, Ronald? Yeah. I've got my statement.
I can make it.
Oh.
Uh, I move we appoint Heather Beulie to seat four of the Parks and Community Services Committee for a term expiring in December of twenty twenty five. Can I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Any discussion or questions of Heather? Counselor Bjarnson?
No.
Do you want to
Oh, good.
Potential.
Yeah. Uh, would be worth it. To a committee?
There's no money on this.
There's no money.
Right, okay, all right. Any questions of Heather?
Um, are you related to anyone on this committee?
Mary, one of the counselors.
Just wanted to clarify. No, I don't have any, any questions.
Counselor Hooker? What's your motivation, Heather?
Um, so keep open, just beautiful, this. Point of respecting our trees in the city, follow us around.
Thanks, thanks. Something else, I will call for a vote, Jackie?
Mayor Ketchum?
Aye.
Counselor Kenyon?
Aye.
Counselor Bjarnson?
Aye.
Counselor Hooker?
Aye.
Counselor Tomlin?
Aye.
All right, motion passes. Uh, next is fifteen point three, to reappoint Gail Farptain to be seat three of the Oak Ridge Planning Commission. Is Gail in there?
Um, she's not in the room, I, I don't believe she's on the Zoom either, unless she's one of the
Gail, are, are you on the Zoom? Okay, well, move on.
May I ask a question, has anyone contacted Gail and asked her to be here?
Yep. I think we had mentioned on the agenda last
Just give your word, second.
She was not.
Okay. We'll move on. Next is eighteen point four. Uh, to appoint Mary Rivera to seat five of the Oak Ridge Economic Development Advisory Committee for a term starting in December twenty twenty five.
Twenty six.
Twenty six, very good.
I move we appoint Mary Rivera, if that's how you say it. Um, to seat five of the Oak Ridge Economic Development Advisory Committee for a term expiring in December of twenty twenty six.
Your second. Made by Counsel, motion made by Counsel Kenyon, seconded by Counsel Tomlin. Any questions for Ms. Rivera?
Um, what is your motivation?
Um, motivation, of course, um, decorate and bring innovative ideas, must say that I'm encouraged. Innovation in ideas, yeah, letters you can be part of something around.
And my only other question would be is how long have you been here?
I just came, actually, this summer, so I'm here.
Cool, welcome.
Any other questions? Your resume, Mary.
Yes, thank you.
All right, no questions. Uh, the motion would be to appoint Mary Rivera to seat five of the Oak Ridge Economic Development Advisory Committee for a term expiring in December of twenty twenty six. Jackie, we call for a vote, please?
Counselor Kenyon?
Aye.
Mayor Ketchum?
Aye.
Counselor Bjarnson?
Aye.
Counselor Hooker?
Aye.
Counselor Tomlin?
Aye.
All right, motion passes. Uh, on to fifteen point five and that is Sue Stella, are you online by chance? Did you? Sue? Thank you. Okay, Sue is not in the audience, we will kick that to the next meeting where she can make it. Been waiting a long time, probably. So we're down to, if, uh, council met another fifteen minutes, would that be okay to get through this last appointment?
Yeah.
Any problems?
Sue, um, let's see, another recommendation on here, is it something like that?
It's an agenda item, so it's
Oh.
Fifteen point six. You okay with fifteen more minutes?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, thanks, everybody. Um, all right, this is fifteen point six, this is a library board appointment and a concern, my concern uh, to be forewarned, it's one position for two applicants, so. James, you want to give any preface to this?
Sure, uh, yeah, so it's been a while since we've had a protested bossy, but that, that's good, that's good. Library board is, it's very popular. Uh, so to give some background on this, uh, on January first, Robert Woodson's position on the library board expired. Uh, he did not submit an application to renew by that time. Uh, I received his new application on the sixteenth of January. Was not able to attend the city council meeting on the nineteenth. Uh, Jill Martin, our other candidate, uh, she was actually approved by city council on November third uh, of last year. However, it was later discovered that the library board had been operating based on the old resolution, thirteen dash two zero one five, which allowed for seven members of the board. But the new resolution, the D dash twenty twenty, only allows for six members on the board, not seven. So there actually was not an open seat to fill and Jill Martin was approved by council. So they are both here tonight to answer some questions. Their applications are attached. Uh, and also they received a letter from library board recommending, um, Robert Woodson, uh, be retained based on his outstanding service. Oh, I should mention that although Jill Martin, when she was approved by council, she's remained on the library board, you know, non-voting, fastly open to the public, everything. But she has still maintained her interest in the board. Has been participating, so, yeah, this, I'm, I'm glad I'm not a counselor for this one. They're both excellent candidates, only one seat to fill.
Thanks, James, right?
Um, I didn't notice that we had both applicants here, is there?
I might have heard of chances.
Oh, I saw him earlier, maybe.
Ms. Martin, I thought I saw you on the
I'm here, hello, I'm here.
Thank you, um, and Mr. Woodson, are you here?
Why is it really?
Think so.
All right, well.
So I'll make a motion to approve Jill Martin to the library committee. I don't see a recommended motion, I don't have agenda bill.
I'll second that.
That's perfect, library board was the correct term on that motion.
Okay, so the motion was made by Counsel Kenyon, seconded by Counsel Bjarnson. Any discussion or questions of Martin?
I'm familiar with her, so I don't have any questions.
Nope.
Anything, Counsel Bjarnson?
Nothing.
All right, um, no discussion, Jackie, would you call for a vote, please?
Counselor Tomlin?
Aye.
Counselor Bjarnson?
Aye.
Mayor Ketchum?
Aye.
Counselor Hooker?
Aye.
Counselor Kenyon?
Aye.
Right, motion passes. Okay, uh, we are down to public comment. Anybody on the Zoom platform want to comment? Raise a hand or just speak up. Bart, is that you? Bill, do you have a comment? Anyone in the room have a comment? Just hand it in.
So, I'm waiting, I just have to thank all the advocates that are volunteering for these vacancies on these committees. I'm really impressed with the council, I'm a member of the board. Um, and I thank you guys so much for all the kind of energy that you're putting in and making the decisions that's going to form our privilege to its fullest potential, thank you.
Anyone else in the room have a comment? All right, well, that's it, we'll adjourn at twenty oh six.
Thank you, bye.